Mr. Allozzi?
Yes.
Dr. Beckpulley?
Here.
Dr. Donohue?
Here.
Mr. Nyman?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
Mrs. Shankle?
Here.
Dr. Shidley?
Here.
Dr. White?
Here.
Mr. Fashioneta?
Here.
Thank you. If you could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To your love, to your strength, to your courage, to your wisdom, to your wisdom, to your justice. And if you could please join me in the prayer of meditation. Thank you. All right, Dr. Roy, we begin. We have some recommendations tonight for our student board representatives.
Yes, we do. We would like to recognize our student school board representatives and the alternates if they're here, who serve the school board for a period of a year, attend monthly school board meetings, and serve the school board throughout the school year. Actually, two years when you look at the alternate year as well. Tonight, the board administration would like to recognize and thank our student board representatives for their service to the school board of this school year. So I ask you to come around to the front. We'd like to recognize Star Stoffer of Liberty High School. And Emma Lazza of Freedom High School. Thank you both for your wonderful reports. Mrs. Kleber, can you get a picture with Mr. Fashioneta? And from for our alternates, we'd like to recognize our juniors who will move up to be the board reps next year. Jessica Esch at Liberty High School for service as an alternate. I don't see Jasneli Floria. Oh, there you are. I'm looking on the sides. So also like to thank our Freedom alternate who will move up to be board rep next year, Jasneli Floria. Thank you all. Thank you, all four of you. You know, these student reps, they're busy students. They're involved in lots of activities in the schools. And so to come out and give us a Monday night and to prepare the reports that they share. So thank you and thank you for your service. And then our final recognition this evening is George B. Yaso, Todd Rothrock, Christmas City Classic. Representatives are here. Mr. Fred Harris is going to come down, a fellow graduate from Liberty High School, who will say a few words. I know Fred likes a microphone, so Fred, you know, just a few words.
Dr. Roy, I promise we'll be brief. First of all, thank you for having us this evening. For the last 18 years, the George B. Yaso, Todd Rothrock, Christmas City Classic has been getting back to our community. Throughout the course of the last 18 years, we've had a high school event. And recently, in the last few years, the committee has shifted their focus to support our middle and elementary schools as we develop and continue to grow an interrail program, along with our Fifth Life program that we're launching this summer. So we would like to formally thank members of the board with us tonight, Allison Rothrock, Judge Warner, and Victoria Yaso, through their generosity and hard work from all of our sponsors, including our title sponsor, St. Luke's University Health Network. They are pleased to present tonight a check for $16,000, $1,000 to each elementary school to help foster interrail sports at the grade five and eleven. Their gift upon one of our focuses, the Bethel Mary School District, will help our students be introduced and have opportunities that they otherwise might not have. So we'd like to present a check to Mr. Fashioneta in about $16,000 from the committee.
Thank you so much. And that fifth year of the second quarter of the year, so the donation goes right to the mark. And Tori, it's good to see you. Tori, my daughter's the best. So that's a good thing. That concludes the recognition.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Roy. We move on to courtesy of Florida visitors. Any permission to speak on agenda items only? Well, the second courtesy before we begin for any business. Seeing none, and that will take us to our reports of student representatives. And we will start the final time with Freedom tonight. Ms. Lazza?
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Fashioneta, Dr. Roy, school board members, and everyone in attendance tonight. I want to start off by saying what an honor it has been to serve as a representative for Freedom High School as school board representative this past year. Once I heard it both when it was back, I wish there was a way to know you're in the middle days before you actually left them. After two years of sense of uncertainty inflicted by COVID-19, Freedom has returned to complete in-person instruction and renewal of mass management at a much-needed sense of return to normalcy. The loving role of survival stops as you wrap up a month of May. The greater fanfare has grown strong during these crucial times. But the support for friendships and memories make the days of Freedom the middle days. The journey is not over yet. We still have a couple of days remaining until our season. On May 17th at 6:30 p.m., the academic awards ceremony is held where students receive recognition. On the 19th, the art show happened from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Then year-round signing occurred for the class of 2022 from 1:30 to 2:30 p.m. on the 20th and 25th. This week, five months and two weeks on May 23rd, 26th, and 27th. On June 3rd, graduating class of 2022 will enjoy a run of a morning to enjoy a delicious breakfast and a good time with the friends at the senior breakfast from 7:30 to 8:15 a.m. The moment of class of 2022 has been waiting for. Graduation will take place on Tuesday, June 7th at 7:00 p.m. There is much to look forward to, but we can't forget about the great things that Patriots are currently doing. Our sports teams have been dominating lately. On May 3rd, the softball team beat East 11-0, followed by another win on May 5th against Liberty 9-8. Boys volleyball is on the south coast. On May 3rd, they won 3-0 versus Zero and did it again, who scored 3-0 in their Liberty game on May 4th. Boys and girls across continues the streak. On May 2nd, boys beat Azir 13-5, and on May 4th, Liberty 20-4. The girls have scored Liberty as well, but they score 60-4 on May 4th. As all the string sports at Freedom come to a close, senior athletes and seniors are coming to the back. The mark will always remain in the track, field, or court, no matter where it takes them. These past weeks, AP exams occurred throughout the school days. The stress and hours of studying hit off as we finished the legal part. The event happened on May 15th. Students got to spend their time eating great food and dancing the night away, meanwhile, looking amazing. Thanks to students and faculty at Freedom High School for helping end this school year in high mood. This was Emma Lazza. Thank you for your time. I wish everyone an amazing end of school year.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lazza. Congratulations. We will see you in a few weeks. Congratulations. Appreciate your service this year. Ms. Stoffer, one final report for Liberty.
Good evening, Dr. Roy, Mr. Fashioneta, members of the school board, and everyone in attendance tonight. As Liberty's 100th year has come to a close, many exciting end-of-the-year activities are heard. Senior supportive voting occurred earlier this month, and the results were announced on May 3rd, and the winners took photos for the year vote on May 6th. Congrats to everyone who was not leaving. Also, on May 6th, our orchestra pops concert was held in Liberty's Memorial Gym at 8:00 p.m. The concert featured our orchestra as well as the Liberty acapella singers. Congrats to everyone involved. On May 12th, Liberty Theater Company eagerly waited for the Freddie nominations and had a delicious lunch, which was provided by Pats Bistro. Liberty Theater is proud to announce that we have been nominated for outstanding orchestra, outstanding use of scenery, outstanding use of costumes, outstanding use of lighting, outstanding choreography, outstanding vocal performance by Bex Mullen, outstanding stage crew, Bex Mullen for outstanding performance by an actress in a leading role, and outstanding overall production. We are also proud to announce that the cast has been given the opportunity to perform Dover and Mead in Sound of Music live at the Freddie's. The Freddie Awards will be live on WFMZ on May 26th at 7:00 p.m. Be sure to tune in. Liberty held its Sever City Awards at Northeast Middle School on May 18th. Congrats to all the students who received awards and scholarships. Congratulations to sophomore Grace Deja and junior Ben Pfeffer for securing first-place awards at the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science, state-level competition held at Penn State University on May 16th. The Asper One Biology and English Ten Keystones occurred on May 18th, 19th, and 20th. Students will be receiving their scores via mail and phone. After two weeks, AP testing is finally complete. So students who took one or more AP tests can expect to receive their scores in July via call to. Liberty's prom was held at Arts Quest on May 20th from 6:30 to 10:00 p.m. It was a great night full of dancing, socializing, and of course, the crowning of our king and queen. Liberty's class of 2022, Crown King, is Michael Devers, and Crown Queen, is Jasmine Valdez, both representing the 100th class of Liberty. Congrats to everyone on Crown Court and thank you to all who attended. Our academic achievement awards ceremony was held today, May 23rd from 8:00 to 9:30 a.m. The program featured our bagpipes, acapella singers, and breakfast. Congrats to everyone who received scholarships and thank you to the generous service. With your help, Liberty was able to give over $75,000 worth of scholarships to our very talented students. Congratulations to our class speaker, Anthony Sarkozy, and our faculty speaker, Shladeen. Be sure to come and join us for our end-of-the-year events celebrating our seniors and celebrating Liberty's 100th year anniversary. The all-sports awards night is being held on Friday, June 3rd at 6:00 p.m. As this is a great way to represent all of our hurricane athletes for their hard work this season. The 100th dedication ceremony will be held on Sunday, June 5th on the front steps of the school. And the alumni band and choir concert will be held later that afternoon at 3:00 p.m. in the BAST Stadium. Last but not least, be sure to join us for graduation on Wednesday, June 8th at 6:00 p.m. in the BAST Stadium. That's all from Liberty. Thank you for your time. Have a great summer, and this is Star Stoffers.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stoffer. Again, thank you both for all your efforts this past year. You gave us really good reports. Next up on the agenda is our approval of minutes. We have the April 25th regular board meeting. In the May 16th, special board meetings. Our motion to approve those. Dr. White, second. Mrs. Patrick, comments on that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. We have multiple committee minutes. We have the February 7th Curriculum Committee, the March 7th Curriculum Committee, the May 9th Facilities, the May 9th Curriculum, and May 16th War Finance and Human Resources Committee. Motion to approve all those minutes. Dr. Donohue, second. I'm sure, are you? Any questions or comments on those minutes? None. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. All right, motion carries as well. Item seven on the agenda is the financial report, 701 through 704. Is there a motion to approve those? Dr. Shidley, second. Dr. White, questions or comments on any of those financial items? Seeing none, Mrs. Gober, if you could pull the board on 701 through 704, please.
Dr. Donohue?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shankle?
Yes.
Dr. Shidley?
Yes.
Dr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Allozzi?
Yes.
Dr. Beckpulley?
Yes.
Mr. Fashioneta?
Yes.
All motions passed, lines are.
Thank you, Mrs. Gober. Report prior to this meeting, we had an executive session focused on personnel. Dr. Roy, do you have the report?
I have no additional report.
Any unfinished business for anyone in the board? Seeing none, that will take us on to the recommendations of the administration. The first one up is board facilities. There is only one item. Dr. Beckpulley, motion to approve item 1101.
Still moved.
Second. Donohue, thank you. Questions on that lease agreement? Seeing none. Mrs. Gober, if you could pull the board on 1101, please.
Dr. Donohue?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shankle?
Yes.
Dr. Shidley?
Yes.
Dr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Allozzi?
Yes.
Dr. Beckpulley?
Yes.
Mr. Fashioneta?
Yes.
Motion passed, lines are.
Mrs. Gober, next up is the curriculum agenda, 1201 through 1203. Dr. Shidley, motion to approve that?
Still moved.
Is there a second? Mrs. Patrick, questions or comments on those three items? Seeing none. Mrs. Gober, if you could pull the board, please.
Dr. Donohue?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shankle?
Yes.
Dr. Shidley?
Yes.
Dr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Allozzi?
Yes.
Dr. Beckpulley?
Yes.
Mr. Fashioneta?
Yes.
All motions passed, lines are.
Next up are finance items, 1301, all the way down to 1319 on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve those finance items? Dr. White, second. Mrs. Patrick, questions or comments on finance items? None. Mrs. Gober, if you could pull the board, please. 1301 through 1319.
Dr. Donohue?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shankle?
Yes.
Dr. Shidley?
Yes.
Dr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Allozzi?
Yes.
Dr. Beckpulley?
Yes.
Mr. Fashioneta?
Yes.
All motions passed, lines are.
Thank you, Mrs. Gober. And lastly, we have the human resource items, 1401 through 1408 on the agenda. Mrs. Patrick, motion to approve those?
Still moved.
Is there a second? Mrs. Shankle, thank you. Questions or comments on the lead items? Seeing none. Mrs. Gober, if you could pull the board on 1401 through 1408, please.
Dr. Donohue?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shankle?
Yes.
Dr. Shidley?
Yes.
Dr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Allozzi?
Yes.
Dr. Beckpulley?
Yes.
Mr. Fashioneta?
Yes.
All motions passed, lines are.
Thank you, Mrs. Gober. Just wanted to acknowledge item 1402 there, which was a three-year extension of the contract with the Bethlehem Education Association. Not many changes there. We're in a nice position where we have a good worker relationship. And a year out from this current contract expiration, we could add a three-year extension on that. Really, not many changes at all. And then providing some salary increases for our teachers who certainly have the best. Three years of this pandemic deserve every penny we can afford to pay them. So thank you to our pennies on the back and all our teachers who show up day in and day out under ridiculously stressful conditions as of late. We're proud to continue to have another almost four years in place between the one year left and the current three-year extension. So that puts a district there of students in all those spots. So thank you to all our teachers.
I'll just echo everything Mr. Fashioneta said with regard to our teachers. And then in addition, with the board's vote, we confirm the board appointed Jalissa Jimenez, currently Assistant Principal at Dunagan Elementary, to be the principal of Marvine Elementary School. Jalissa? Additionally, the board appointed Nancy Zoda, currently Assistant Principal at Rockland Middle School, to be the principal of Rockland Elementary School. We're excited to have them assume their new responsibilities effective July 1st, although I know they're working on things. And then finally, Dr. Joe Anthis, currently principal of Liberty Band, was appointed by the board to the position of supervisor of related arts. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Roy. Then lastly, 1403, beyond our teachers, we have our excellent instructional leaders and principals. And there's a new agreement there with them as well. Another group has certainly gone above and beyond, but without a lot of sleep the past several years, trying to put together a program and still deliver education in the middle of the pandemic. So thank you to our teachers and thank you to our instructional leaders and principals and folks who make the district proud every day. So thank you to two excellent groups. That will take us on to the reports of our committees. First up is Northampton Community College. Dr. Beckpulley?
The Northampton Community College, more or less, met on May 5th. We first heard an overview of the academic affairs program and that entire department and all the things that they have going on. Some of the academic affairs highlights in the departments. They are expanding outreach to military-affiliated students and finding ways to give credit for military service to get veterans or active military personalities who are already on their way towards a degree even before they start at Northampton Community College. They're adding new programs, which sound particularly interesting, like baking and industry that builds off of their already pretty fantastic culinary program over there. Also, craft distillery is a specialized diploma that will become a new connection that dovetails with growing industry and opportunity in our region. One thing I really did though, want to highlight, was the discussion we had over the college connections department that is a two-person team who somehow managed to run the dual enrollment program and outreach between the community college and area high schools. And a lot of this work was piloted right here in the Bethel Mary School District with the math readiness and other college readiness programs that our district sort of helped them figure out and perfect and still operate pretty substantially in our program. That overall dual enrollment in Northampton is now back up over 1,000 students this year after dipping during the pandemic. But just to stress the value of this program and its importance for students across the valley, and certainly in Bethel Mary School District, they described, and we got to hear from some students who've taken advantage of it, and not only had a fabulous learning experience, but built a ton of confidence around their own readiness to go to college after graduating from high school. They asked that we clarify that this isn't the same as an AP class. This is truly college readiness and college exploration that comes with a lot of support in your home high school, but also with the support of staff at Northampton Community College. And so whatever we as a board can do, another BAST rep and I both raised our hand to say whatever we can do to help bring this even more to our students. And so that is what I'm doing by just describing it here today, but also asking that folks advocate in the state budget that there be more support for community colleges and programs like these. And then also our board consider dual enrollment and opportunities, like dual enrollment would be a priority for our students as we consider our own budget going forward, which I know that it's always in there. That's been a long priority for Bethel Mary School District. Otherwise, we have got a financial update on the budget for the year coming up and overall operations, and approved all of the requests that the administration took before us.
Thank you, Dr. Beckpulley. Next up, report from the vocational tech from the school. Mrs. Shankle?
The VOTech met on May 3rd. And standard business, one of the items covered was a revision of the calendar, which is available on the website, actually right on the homepage. Also, recognition of a number of students. So there is a conference coming up for future health professionals. And the VOTech is sending three competitors and two chaperones to Tennessee. These students placed first through third in the conference that was recently held in Ballack. We also have seven students and two teachers going to Atlanta for the National Leadership and Skills Conference. So again, a good representation of our students. It's also good to send a number of staff to the PA Career and Technical Administrators Summer Leadership Conference. Some major proof for paper, as we know, hasn't been so easy lately. So there's some kinds of proof for paper. And health insurance rates. And the next meeting is Wednesday, June 15th. It normally would have been the 7th, but June graduations, it was moved to Wednesday, June 15th.
Thank you, Mrs. Shankle. Next up, the board from the IU. Dr. Shidley?
Yes, we met on April 27th. And during the meeting, during the standard meeting, we talked about negotiations with the instructional staff, the educational association. I think since got communication that they have come to a tentative revision. So it looks like those negotiations are coming to a close. We also talked about a number of budget issues, but probably the best thing was we met at the, actually at Colonial Academy, where they celebrated the 50th anniversary of CIU 20. And I didn't know this, but currently, Dr. Wolfholt, who's the current executive director, is only the fifth or sixth in all that time. So they've had a lot of staying power, all of them. All the executive directors at the CIU have been very faithful and long-lasting. We had all kinds of celebrations. Former students spoke, former teachers spoke. Some of the previous executive directors spoke as well. And then the food truck from the vocational tech school came up and served us food, and it was very, very good, stunningly good. So and we will be meeting again this Wednesday, the 25th.
Thank you, Dr. Shidley, Mr. Allozzi, Mrs. Shankle, the task force, excellence.
No report, there was no meeting. And I did just want to make mention that the Dr. Draper and Mr. Fontes did make a presentation during the May 9th curriculum meeting. That was akin to a presentation that was sought, just to kind of, I just wanted to make the board and the public aware that that mission is out and that the minutes are clear.
Thank you, Mr. Allozzi. PSBA report, still following along on the budget as we get closer and closer to June when the negotiations really begin on that. Also, PSBA along with every other statewide group is closely monitoring the voucher bill that passed at our house not too long ago. It still has no move in the Senate, has not been taken up. It's not up for a vote, but keeping the pressure on is continuing to contact Senator Mascola, Senator Scavelo, any other relationships you have with any other state senator that if it does come up, get them to commit to a hard no on that. It funds a lot of money. Out of public schools, completely unaccountable. It would be used to buy books, buy supplies, pay for the first two years of college, all kinds of things that public tax dollars for education are not meant to be funded. Also, there is a report, it was not PSBA, it came out from PA Schools Work today, or was it Ed voters, sorry, Ed voters PA, about the condom of connection to Cyber Academy. If you have not seen that, take a look at it. If you want to be angry, you can see about the school, this particular school sending gift cards and debit card to families to go on vacations, take trips, go to Davey Musters, all the name of field trips for cyber students. So I'm sure there are many students in Bethel Mary School District who have not gone on a field trip in quite some time, whether it be for COVID, whether it be for lack of funding, or the PTO can't raise money. So just know if you go to this particular cyber school, you can get really a nice income and pay a car payment every month, send someone gift cards and they have a field trip. So completely, completely unbelievable, even on a faculty account. That is on the Ed voters PA website if you haven't seen it. Tomorrow, there's an advocacy day in Harrisburg. Several groups, Ed voters, PA Schools Work, along with the Teach Plus Group is a part of, in Harrisburg for the day, to advocate and push for opposition to the voucher bill, as well as support for the governor's budget and full funding of public education, equitable funding. We do have an Austin, depending, or anything on that, till probably September, October, early. So we'll still need to speak up in this budget season. Next up is the foundation. We met last week, last Tuesday. The majority of the time was taken up by Dr. Draper and Mr. Fontes giving a similar presentation to what we saw at our school board meeting a few weeks ago. Very well received by the trustees. And I mean, these are folks not necessarily connected to the district, other than maybe through their employer or as parents. This is the first time they've seen. other than maybe through their employer as parents. This is the first time they were seeing it. Uh, very impressed by what was presented, very, uh, excited about the opportunities. Remember, the foundation in particular has been focused on equity, uh, funding workshops through bed pick services and a part of P S B A that the board was delighted to participate in, looking at diversity, equity, inclusion. So they are very excited to see the direction the district is going. Uh, beyond that, grants were approved for, I'm sorry, not grants. Uh, scholarship awards to the high schools were approved through some of the, the Gasso Memorial Fund that we heard from tonight. The Burkhart Scholarship, uh, started with the elementary schools, Donegan, um, Spring Garden, who had that offers scholarships every year. The foundation gives approvals to those with that money as well as the, um, best awards. The Rant Committee met and has made our selections for best awards. They'll be announced in June. The teachers will be surprised in their classrooms. We have a wonderful amount of nominations from all students, parents, colleagues, the best awards. Uh, we give it out every year, one elementary, one little, one high school teacher. Um, the best of the best in our district for that year. So listen for those reports coming soon. And then of course, one more plug for the Liberty Dedication Ceremony again on Sunday, June fifth. Uh, hopefully be a nice day, but there are building tours in the morning, leading up to the ceremony at five and then events going on. We're going to have a party at the graduation. So I encourage you to come on out and really be part of a a once in every hundred year, once in my lifetime, uh, celebration. So keep an eye on the weekend of June fourth and the fifth. And then lastly, we have the wellness committee. Has there been a wellness committee meeting?
Um, there was, and I need to, uh, ask forgiveness as I was not able to attend. However, uh, I promise to come with a full report at our next meeting. The next committee meeting is not until September to clear.
Right. Thank you. Uh, any new or Miss Lady's business before we move on? Seeing none. Person four, one more opportunity to speak. Really, it's getting, come on down.
I just wanted to take a minute to thank the board and our administration for your continued partnership in making this extension happen. It's really going to be helpful so that we can focus on our students next year and really get the market done that we need to. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to the floor? Seeing none, now take them to open, take us to open forum. I only have one thing on open forum. I mean, all joking aside, Mr. Stine, it's really breakdown here. This is a wonderful addition to our theater here at East Hills as well as over at Freedom, uh, Board, for example, and the, so this has passed, the frequent lighting, uh, for Freedom and East Hills. It's a significant investment, and you can imagine for concerts and end of year ceremonies and things coming up, uh, this time of year and certainly all year long. This is a wonderful addition to the, uh, dim yellowish that you see up there that we can see now. So, um, took a while to get in, but here they are. It's really, for the theater kids and the choir kids and the bands and the orchestras. It's a wonderful addition. For us, probably doesn't make us look well on TV. Are you touching us up there?
You look great.
Mr. Braun, thank you. Yeah, just put some kind of filter on it. Uh, anything else for the forum? Mrs. Shankle?
Uh, I just wanted to say in my defense for missing the wellness committee. Uh, I had gone to Harrisburg with our Northeast Middle School, What's So Cool About Being a Factory Team, who did place second in the state, which was awesome. Uh, but I wanted to say that we had the opportunity to take a tour of the Capitol and meet some of the local politicians. And with regard to advocacy efforts, um, voices are heard and I saw that firsthand. I've heard that firsthand. So please know that when you make a phone call, when you send an email, whatever it is that you're reaching out about, it is heard and it does mean something to make a difference. So keep on, keep on.
Thank you. Congratulations, kids. Northeast Middle School is some of our best, we're proud of it.
They were, they were.
After all, it's, it's in the place. Dr. White?
I just want to say congratulations again to the theater programs at Freedom and Liberty. It took a hundred years for Liberty to get a Hall of Fame production nomination, yay. Uh, but, uh, I think coming out of the two years of not having the live performances and to be able to come together as a cast speaks not only to the, to the dedication of the students, but the passion and the advocacy of all of the staff that work tirelessly above and beyond what they do on the school day. And it is an exhausting process and it's with love. So I wanted to, to say thank you to the, uh, to the teachers and the administrators that support these theater programs. And don't forget that Thursday, yes, it's the Freddie Awards Show and whoever wins, it's just someone's opinion. You are all advocates.
Mrs. Patrick?
I don't want to be left out with all the kudos, so, um, uh, looking at the agenda this evening, uh, there's a really awesome gentleman who is retiring in the living room district, uh, Mr. Jeffrey Bachman. He is, um, the ultimate professional. Uh, he has been in numerous buildings, different positions within the maintenance department. He is just such an incredible guy. Uh, I got to meet him when my daughter was at Hannover and he was a superhero in that school. And the kids just loved and adored him and I was heartbroken when he left because he went to go pee, but then he wound up back at Richmond. Um, and just a real loss to the district, just a really, really great guy. So thank you, Mr. Bachman, for your years of service.
And just to add to that, uh, we will be hosting a retirement luncheon for breakfast, actually. Um, first time we ever get people together in three years on June tenth at the Hotel Bethlehem. We had some, uh, nice business partners who are helping to sponsor that. And the Galazis opportunity invite retirees back in the past three years, including Mr. Bachman and, uh, and all of this year's retirees for a nice brand mission, uh, program.
Anything else to the forum? Seeing nothing, the board will reconvene for a very brief executive session again dealing with personnel. That being said, motion to adjourn. That will sign the table. All in favor? Anyone opposed? You are adjourned. Thank you.